All right, the time is seven o'clock. I'm going to call to order the meeting of City Council for May 5th, 2025. Clerk Swope, could we have the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pallivanaglu.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
There are seven members present at Quorum. Councilmember Carter is absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Is there anyone you would like to remember tonight? Okay, can we please rise for a moment of meditation followed by the pledge of allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
You have your approval of the council proceedings of April 21st.
Councilman Garza. I'd move the April 21st, 2025 city council meeting minutes as written.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes.
Okay, we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have the appointment of Ashley Smith as an at-large member of the Historic District Commission.
Councilman Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. So this is an appointment of Ashley Smith as at-large member of the Historic District Commission, term to expire June 30th, 2027. At our April 23rd Development and Planning Committee meeting, we heard from Ms. Ashley Smith regarding her appointment to the Historic District Commission. Ms. Smith has been a real estate agent, broker, for several years, and a property manager since 2010, with deep ties to Lansing and a clear understanding of the importance of preserving our city's historic structures. She emphasized that her professional experience aligns with the responsibilities of the commission and expressed a strong commitment to maintaining the character and integrity of our historic neighborhoods. With that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations.
(applause) Your work's done. Nice training. Stand right up on the mic. Raise your right hand. Reiterate after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Historic Missport Commission Member.
Historic Mission Commission Member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
All right, congratulations. (applause). The council goes to Councilmember Garrett.
Okay, do we have any council member comments? Councilman Hussein.
Yeah, I have a few. First is that we have our next Southwest Lansing constituent contact meeting this Saturday, which is May 10th, 10 to 12 noon. That is at the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center located at 5825 Wise Road. As always, we will meet in the Sandy Allen Room. We have special guest, State House Rep. for District 71 Angela Whitwer, who will be there to talk about a number of issues going on at the state that obviously affect all of us. We will talk about our own city's budget and then any Southwest Lansing updates that are pressing. With that being said, we also have an event Monday, May 12th. I actually just learned about this. So this is from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. at the same location, which is the Alfreda Schmidt South Side Community Center at 5825 Wise Road. And it is a Legacy in Motion feature film red carpet event. And so essentially, this is a film kind of of, for, and by folks in Southwest Lansing. It was done through a partnership with both Southwest Action Group as well as Michigan State's Urban Community Engagement Fellows Program. And it really aims to, I think, highlight and discuss the long, rich history of Southwest Lansing, the people in Southwest Lansing, spaces, community events, things of that nature, and really, I think, underscores just how important Southwest Lansing is, not only to the folks that live in Southwest Lansing, but I think the broader community. The premiere event will feature the debut screening of the film, followed by a panel discussion with community members and collaborators who helped bring it to life. So that's pretty exciting. Guests will be welcomed with popcorn, beverages. It is free of charge and it is open to the public. So again, that's Monday, May 12th, from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. And the film is called A Legacy in Motion, featuring folks and spaces from across Southwest Lansing. And then lastly, the Churchill Downs Community Association. Just wanted to announce again that their annual yard sale is May 17th from 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. Again, that is Churchill Downs Community Association Annual Yard Sale, May 17th, sorry, 9:00 to 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. And quickly, before I go on to the next council member, there is a police event for the fallen heroes outside. You will hear cannon fire. Do not be alarmed. It shakes this whole building. So I just wanted to give everyone the heads up before that happens. And then Councilmember Spatafor.
Sure, I just wanted to apologize to my colleagues. Next week, I will be out of the country on a trip we planned about two years ago. So I will not be here next week, but I promise I will watch the recording so I won't miss our budget discussions, but I'll see you the week after.
Perfect, thank you. Any further? Councilman Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. I just want to thank Irene Cahill and her staff at the Forestry Department. On last Tuesday, April 29th, the Forestry Department, along with, in conjunction with Krogers, we planted 20, I'm sorry, 30 trees and 35 trees and 10 shrubs in Cavanaugh Park. So that was a good team effort amongst our community partners. And Irene Cahill, they knocked it out of the park and just wanted to say thank you for your team and all the good work you do around our city.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, seeing none.
All right, I do want to announce that for the Lansing voters who also live west of Waverly in Eaton County, you do have an election tomorrow, Eaton County Special Millage Proposal. So for those of you that have been issued an absentee ballot, you have until 8:00 to get it returned. And if you wish to vote in person, tomorrow, the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. until 8: 00 p.m. And with that, we are to community event announcements. If anyone in the audience has a community event, we'll give you one minute to tell us the details of your event.
So, Second Ward has two neighborhood meetings coming up. Next Wednesday, there's going to be a Neighbors of Scott Woods meeting. I think it's at the Slice by Salaback, I think, if I'm not mistaken, at 6:30 p.m., I think. So, and the Old Everett Neighborhood Association, the following Wednesday, will be held on May 21st at 6:30 p.m. at the Village Lansing, 3525 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. Again, 6:30 p.m. And we're still looking for new board members, as well as looking for people to volunteer for our upcoming picnic in June, I mean, August. So stay tuned for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events? All right, then we are to speaker registration.
Wait, we got one more.
Oh.
Not so quick. All right, on Saturday, May 17th, between 10:00 and 12:00, in front of the Cemetery Courtesy Office directly opposite Mount Hope Cemetery, the Friends of Lansing Historic Cemetery will be holding their 18th Annual Geranium Giveaway. We'll have 100 free seed geraniums to pass out for per family or person for planting in the three city-owned cemeteries, Evergreen, Mount Hope, and North. And again, as I said, those are free. And if you need help planting them, we may have somebody available that can help you with that as well, depending on when you're there and what the weather is and so forth. But May 17th, 10:00 to 2:00, in front of the Cemetery Courtesy Office opposite Mount Hope Cemetery. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other? Okay. Then we are to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters. And that includes the two public hearings, as well as all the items council will be acting on. So on the printed agenda, it's items five through 20. We'll give you another minute to sign in with Magdalene in the back, which, by the way, new intern Magdalene, her first day. In fact, her first minute of working was about a half hour before the council meeting. So welcome, Magdalene. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Good for now. I think you know the mayor is at the police moratorium.
All right, thank you, Mark.
Okay, then we are to public comment on legislative matters. As I indicated, we do have two public hearings as part of legislative matters, the public hearing on the fiscal year 2526 budget and amending Chapter 1615 to allow fireworks on Juneteenth, June 19th of each year.
Councilman Garza.
All right. So the first scheduled public hearing is this fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Mayor Shore has proposed a $307.4 million city budget for fiscal year 2025-2026, reflecting a 13.7% increase from last year. The general fund is proposed at $173.1 million, a 4.7% increase. The budget aims to strengthen city services, invest in infrastructure, and respond to both council and community priorities. For the past few weeks, we've had different departments in to discuss their budget priorities with council as we look to pass the fiscal year budget by the third Monday in May, which is May 19th.
Okay, thank you. And then we have Councilman Brown.
Thank you. We have the scheduled public hearing for amending Chapter 1615 to allow fireworks on Juneteenth, June 19th of each year, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:45 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we do have one written comment regarding the budget from someone named Ian, who didn't give the full name. And then here to speak tonight, we have John Nelson, followed by Jason Lachowski. And speakers will have up to three minutes to address council.
Hello, and thank you again for yet another opportunity to speak. We're going to limit the number of speakers on this topic, but we'll have everyone stand when members of our group are speaking. So you've heard me now a few times talk about the fact that incremental, community-driven, bottom-up, shared-use housing strategies for addressing the housing shortage that we're experiencing in Lansing begins with creating more inclusive zoning, zoning that allows for diverse and often more affordable housing options, such as those included in your planning departments, two proposals to you for tonight's consideration. We are so pleased that after the city's very thorough internal vetting process, unanimous endorsements twice by the Planning Commission, a well-attended public hearing, actually two, without a single voice raised in opposition, and careful scrutiny by the Development and the Planning Committee, that the Second Amendment proposal is ready for your consideration this evening. I want to just thank you all for your thorough vetting of the proposals and for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jason Lachowski, followed by Sharon Camden.
Members of the Lansing City Council, I am Jason Lachowski, Associate State Director of Government Affairs for AARP Michigan, the nation's largest nonprofit, nonpartisan organization dedicated to empowering older adults to choose how they live as they age. AARP has 1.25 million members across the state, of which 11,000 are here in the city of Lansing. I am speaking tonight in support of docket item number 20, which would allow accessory dwelling units within the city. AARP Michigan has worked with local volunteers, like you see behind me, as well as other advocates who are standing as well, in support of this proposal. As the proposal has moved through the process, you've heard from volunteers and members of AARP who've submitted letters, attended council hearings, and even some who've come and spoke to you themselves. AARP has long supported the expansion of accessory dwelling units, not only here in the city, but all across the state. They provide affordable, accessible housing options for all ages, but are particularly popular among older adults looking to age in their community. According to a recent AARP survey, nearly 60% of adults would consider living in an ADU, with 3/4 of those adults interested in creating an ADU as a place for a caregiver to stay. I encourage a yes vote tonight to allow ADUs in Lansing. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Next, we have Sharon Camden, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Good evening and thank you for your time this evening. My name is Shereen Kambeen, and I'm with the Immigrant and Refugee Resource Collaborative. I'd like to read a letter that I sent earlier on April 17th that outlines why this option is something that is really exciting for the populations and the communities we work with. So, "Dear City of Council, City of Lansing Council Members, on behalf of the Immigrant and Refugee Resource Collaborative, we write to express our strong support for expanding and diversifying housing options in Lansing. Policies that allow for boarding houses, rooming houses, cottage courts, cooperative housing, and accessory dwelling units are vital to a more inclusive and sustainable city. Lansing has proudly been a refugee resettlement community since the 1970s. Each year, immigrants and refugees arrive and contribute meaningfully to our city's schools, businesses, neighborhoods, and communities. Were it not for newcomers, Lansing's population, like so many other cities across Michigan, would have likely declined significantly in recent decades." And I forwarded a handout to you, along with this letter, that outlines some of the contributions that refugees and immigrants have made to our state and to our nation. However, for many of these residents, safe, affordable housing remains one of the most persistent and urgent challenges. Many come from collectivist cultures where extended and intergenerational family living is the norm. It's seen as both healthy and economical. The current limitations in housing types make it difficult for families to live in ways that reflect their values and traditions. At the same time, many newcomers take deep pride in homeownership and see housing as a sign of independence, security, and belonging. We believe that diversifying housing options is not only a practical matter, but also an essential step in making Lansing a place where people can stay, put down roots, and thrive. It aligns with our city's values of growth and opportunity for all. Thank you for considering this important zoning upgrade. We are eager to work with you to build and support a Lansing that meets the needs of all who live here. Thank you for your time."
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by David Lee Lambert.
So, this, I'm here to talk about the item number 16, and that is urging the Michigan Legislature to allow red light cameras and speed cameras for traffic enforcement purposes. And after what happened on MLK Boulevard, I do believe that something like that should be necessary. However, I don't know if this goes far enough, as we need to do a complete and dramatic redo of MLK Boulevard, because, same thing with Cedar Street, because those roads are so wide that it's really hard for, with so many lanes, that it's kind of a nightmare for residents and pedestrians to walk across the street without worrying about being run over by a car and having to run just across the street, which is what I usually have to do, which is not something I should really have to deal with. And I believe that boulevards should be added to the road if those roads need to stay that wide, because it is, especially where the cars are intersecting, because after what happened in that car crash on MLK Boulevard, where there were two cars drag racing up MLK Boulevard and causing numerous damage, I think it also damaged a taco truck, last I checked, and possibly killed at least, I think, one person and severely injured a couple of others. And it was also in close proximity to a church, which, just nearby, which is kind of frightening. And also nearby was also the Village Lansing, just a couple of blocks away, meaning the people working there or doing something there might have heard it and probably ran out with quite the fright hearing something like that. They, and having utilized them to, like, having worked with them to host our neighborhood meetings with them, is, I do feel sorry for them, because I don't think they have to deal with hosting that. And as the leader of the Old Everett neighborhood, the neighborhood where that car crash had happened, I do believe that, yes, we should urge the state legislature to allow red light cameras and traffic cameras so that drag racing can easily be reported and prevented and responded to accordingly. But we also need to go further by adding boulevards to MLK Boulevard so that drag racing like this doesn't happen and that pedestrians can cross the street safely. That's all I'm going to need to say, and I shall yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. And next, we have David Lee Lambert.
Good evening. As I said, my name is David Lambert. I live on Holm Street in the Potter Walsh neighborhood. I'd like to just share my opinions on four of the agenda items tonight. So first of all, preserving the tax exempt status of municipal bonds, I think that's exactly what should be done. That's a tradition in our country, and it's a way for people to really support their own city and any other function of government that they want to have a part in. And so I think that we should keep that the way it is. I would encourage you to encourage the legislature to make sure that happens. For electronic participation in public comment at meetings, I think that's an important part of the process. Even though it's a little bit different, maybe 100 years ago, that wasn't possible, but that's an important thing for some citizens to participate in their government more easily today. And if you can make that a little bit easier by tweaking the language in the statute, go Increasing staffing in the police department. If the police, I'll honestly say that they need more staffing, and I don't want to find out that they aren't there when I need them. I'm in favor of enough police and enough fire in the city. And I encourage you to make sure we still have that. And I think a lot of people in this city are willing to pay a little bit more taxes to make sure that they have police and that the police are able to respond to situations as they happen, not six hours later or the next day. The last thing I'd like to talk about is red light cameras. You have before you a resolution, and it certainly balances the concerns of privacy and actually catching certain things that people might do that everyone knows that no one should do, like running a red light and other traffic violations. It's only been a week or so since the incident that prompted us to worry about this again. And I'd encourage you to look more carefully at that resolution and make sure it emphasizes due process for people accused based on red light, on-camera evidence. Thank you.
Thank you. We are to the referral of the public hearings, item five of the budget.
It'll go to committee of the whole.
And item six, the Juneteenth fireworks.
Go to city operations.
All right, we are to the consent agenda.
Councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you, Council President. I make a motion to move the consent agenda with the following items. Number seven, appointment of Bridget Boozer, at-large member of the Historic District Commission, for a term to expire June 30th, 2025. Various reappointments to boards and commissions. Number 10, collective bargaining agreement Teamsters 214 for the period covered in January 1st, 2025, to December 31st, 2029. Number 11, encouraging the Michigan congressional delegations to support preserving the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. Number 12, Act 51 Street Certification, Dory Lane, Josephine Way, and the westerly portion of Red Cedar Parkway. Thirteen, setting a public hearing on a noise special permit. Lansing Housing Commission requests to allow for the building of a new 63-unit apartment building at 220 East Kalamazoo Street. And number 14, setting a public hearing of noise special permit. Lansing Housing Commission requests to allow for the building of a new 56-unit apartment building at 510 Cherry Street. With that, I would move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. I would like to remove number nine and/or separate the question, just to take the Board Water and Light reappointment out for a vote and not in the consent agenda. So I don't know if you need to take all of nine out, or if you can just take Board Water and Light out and have that off the consent agenda.
City Attorney.
You can pull the resolution out of the consent agenda, but you can't pull just a portion of the resolution out of the consent agenda. You'd have to amend it to make two resolutions, which would require a fair amount of work in a very short amount of time. And I think it's contrary to council proceedings. The council's own rule is about presentation of new resolutions.
Okay, so we can pull it out of consent agenda?
Yes.
All right. So we have a motion for the consent agenda with number nine pulled out for action. Do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Okay, then we are to resolutions for action, and we have item nine that was pulled off the consent agenda.
Councilmember Garza.
Okay, that is reappointments to various boards and commissions. And do we want to pull the Board Water and Light? Okay, so then with that, I would move the resolution reappointments.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Just the reason why I pulled this is so that we don't, so that I can vote no against the Board Water and Light appointee. It's nothing against this wonderful person, Simone James, wonderful person. However, it's more of a vote against the Board Water and Light. I've noticed over my time on council that it just doesn't seem like they're really a utility for the people. I don't really know many decisions that were made that seem like that. And specifically, I think that they deceived us when it comes to their climate goals and their clean energy goals. They deceived us when they built the Rice Natural Gas Supercharged Power Plant after saying they would build no more carbon infrastructure. And they also deceived us when they raised the hike, they hiked the tax rates, or excuse me, the rates, by saying it's to pay for a clean energy bond. But they did the clean energy bond so they could pay for the natural gas plant, which is not clean energy. And they dodged that question just long enough until the state came up with some kind of thing that says, okay, it's not clean, but they knew that for the whole time. And I don't think that any of the commissioners really have the specific expertise to challenge or come up with different things, and that it's whatever the general manager says is what happens. And it's up to first us to put in the right, well, I guess it's up to the mayor to appoint somebody, but then us to confirm or deny them, and then the commissioners to come up with the direction of the Board Water and Light by representing the people. It just doesn't seem like that happened. Every very major, important decision that's made, even at their own meetings, there's very little discussion about it. It's just the general manager saying what is happening, and then people trying to figure out what that means later, after it's been pushed through. And of course, that's my opinion. I'm sure there'll be pushback and probably a nice article that says Councilman Jackson does not know what he's talking about. Come see me if you want to talk about Board Water and Light stuff. But this is our only forum to vet people who will make decisions for the Board Water and Light. And I've routinely, over the years, voted no for people, not because they're bad people, because they're great, but because I don't think that it's helping us. And again, why would we have all the same people thinking the same thing? Do people really think that it's like, whatever, oh, vote for the things that they do, whether it's the rate hike or the clean energy? No, we know people in Lansing has way different opinions. So why does it seem like it's always the same? So... So, yeah, I won't be supporting that. And another reason, if you guys, since we're not separating it, and that's fine, because usually nobody supports it. However, if one person did, we would probably have to, um, kick all these out, is because look at how many serious reappointments are all on at once. We had it at committee of the whole, um, whether it's, you know, the police, the fire, public service, all these different important things. We had a committee poll and then now. So it's another reason maybe to vote no, so that these can be vetted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes six, one.
Okay, we are to item 16, uh, regarding red light cameras.
Fifteen.
It's a night already. Item 15, uh, community development block grant.
Councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you, council president. So before us, we have the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2025-2026. This evening, we are taking action on the resolution to adopt the City of Lansing's Community Development Block Grant Budget. As outlined in the Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 2025-2026, this plan ensures continued compliance with HUD requirements and enables the city to access federal funding that supports a wide range of eligible activities aimed at improving housing stability, public services, and neighborhood infrastructure. With that, I would move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, now we are to item 16, the red light cameras.
Councilmember Hussein.
Sure, and just to, to clear up a little confusion, we are not looking tonight to, as an example, introduce or pass, uh, any legislation at the local level that would actually authorize, uh, red light cameras or speed traffic, uh, cameras. What we're doing, um, is asking the state of Michigan, um, to essentially provide a framework that would allow municipalities such as the City of Lansing, um, to, to utilize, uh, red light cameras as well as speed, um, uh, enforcement cameras. Um, as of now, 23 states and the District of Columbia do allow, uh, for these types of cameras, uh, in the automation system to actually, um, support and, and enforce. Um, the, the first red light camera program, uh, was actually implemented way back in 1992 in the state of New York. Uh, states have shown a demonstrable decrease, uh, in fatalities, uh, vehicular accidents of all types. Uh, and with, and in the language, I think, in the resolution is clear, right now, uh, speeds are up, uh, traffic accidents are up. Um, unfortunately, uh, law enforcement, uh, numbers are down. Uh, the, I think the severity, uh, of the accidents that we're seeing, um, as evidenced, uh, by the accident last week, uh, unfortunately, uh, those are, those are up as well. Uh, and then there's also this, uh, reality that post, uh, you know, maybe George Floyd, uh, there really is a desire, uh, I think on the part of the public to see, um, uh, you know, when you look at moving traffic violations as an example, is there a way to, uh, enforce without necessarily having to have a law enforcement official, um, actually enforce that, that moving violation? And so you couple all of those things together, uh, and we thought that the time was right to once again ask the legislature to consider this. This is not new, uh, for our state legislature. Uh, they have been looking to pass this for the past several years. As a matter of fact, I think Senator Anthony, uh, took up, uh, the effort. It was either last legislative session or the session before that. Uh, unfortunately, it was not, um, it did not make it past, uh, the goal line and out of the governor's desk. So this is just us asking them once again to take this measure up, uh, and give us, uh, the opportunity to then engage the public and put together a plan that's implementable and actionable. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Jackson.
Sorry, I'll try to be quick. So I'm gonna try to support this so that it's unanimous coming out, but I just want to caution because I think there are some, I don't know if what you said, uh, Councilman Hussein about the accidents is, is pure fact, because there are also some studies that suggest that it increases accidents. There are, there are those out there and, and it could just be a quick search for those people to see that. Um, and I'm just, since we didn't really talk about all those, I think that there are some concerns, but, um, I just want to put on the record so that, uh, if it turns out that, you know, it is bad, um, then I had said something, but I also can support it because it's just sending it up for this consideration and it doesn't sound like it's something we want it, it just says, consider all these options because we need to do something. So that's how I can support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further? Councilmember Hussein.
Yeah, and I absolutely appreciate that. And the, the resolution actually reflects, um, there, there's a paragraph where it talks about public input, uh, transparency. Uh, and so, you know, obviously, if we, if the framework's provided at the state level, then we, it would be upon us, right? Uh, incumbent, sorry, upon us to, to actually engage the public in a way, um, that ensures, um, their support, uh, and then we could obviously move forward with their support. But, um, all that being said, I wanted to be clear too, um, I think, uh, we had a couple commentators, um, talk about, you know, other, uh, efforts along our corridors. Um, we, this is not, you know, the, the singular thing we've been working on. Uh, and so as an example, just on MLK, as an example, uh, we have a few of us at this day that have worked very closely with the administration and MDOT, um, to take a look at really the built environment up and down, um, that corridor, uh, look at potential funding for things like refuge islands, additional crossings, uh, markers, um, signals, uh, things of that nature. And those could, some of those things have actually been funded and will actually be built, um, this coming, uh, construction season, and some of those things are still being studied. Uh, we also, as a council, uh, have supported legislation that actually passed last legislative session, uh, at the state level, um, to, to give municipalities such as the City of Lansing more control over the speed limits on local corridors such as, I should say, state trunk lines, but that really traverse, um, kind of our local communities such as South MLK and Cedar, um, and the list goes on and on. And so, um, this is just hopefully one additional tool in the toolbox that we might, um, have access to, uh, but I think this council's been pretty active, um, in doing what we can, uh, to support, um, safer, safer traffic patterns, uh, out in the City of Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on this issue? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Okay, item 17, uh, regarding, uh, increased staffing for Lansing Police and Lansing Fire Departments.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, council president. So this is urging the city administration to increase staffing within the Lansing Fire and Police Departments. This resolution calls for immediate action to address the critical staffing shortages in both the Lansing Fire and Police Departments. It highlights recent public safety challenges, including the deadly street race that was raised, uh, earlier today, incident in, in an overwhelming day where LFD responded to over 101 calls with all five ambulances in a, in use for a substantial amount of the day. The resolution acknowledges that while the state's Public Safety Trust Fund funding mechanism may help police staffing in the future, our fire department's needs remain unaddressed. It urges the administration to implement a multi-year staffing plan that adds three to six full-time positions annually in each department until safe and sustainable levels are reached. This is about protecting our residents, supporting our first responders, and ensuring Lansing remains a safe place to live, work, and raise a family. And with that, I would move the resolution.
Okay. We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Councilmember Spatafor.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Garza, for bringing this before us. Um, as I mentioned earlier, I won't be here next week, but if there is discussion about using the money that's been set aside in the budget for funding positions like mentioned here, I'd absolutely be supportive of that and suggest that be a route we take to help implement the intent of your resolution, but I would, I'm happy to support this and glad you're bringing it before us.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, and I'm gonna try to support this one too, but I, I had, I think it has to be said that we have figured out one of our problems with the shortages, and that is because we are unable to hire enough police officers in fire departments. Agree if, blow, shoot a gun if you agree. Okay. I guess they don't. But, um, anyway, the point is, is that we have, we have funded positions that have been vacant for many years already. Let's use the police department, for example. In the last eight years, and no one give me the exact answer, but at no point has the number of vacancies shrunk below, uh, half a dozen at the lowest. But at the average, it's double digits of police officers that we have already approved in the budget, but we just need them to be hired. So we've, we figured out in the years before and even probably this year that, okay, we have to work on HR and make sure that they are, our hiring process is quick and competitive because people come out of the academy with this skill and there's a statewide desire and need for them. So it's pretty much whoever can, and they're looking to be hired. So whenever they can get hired somewhere, whether it's DeWitt, or East Lansing, or a whole nother sheriff's department in a rural county in Michigan, they're gonna take it. And, okay, so even if we could hire people, are they gonna accept our competitive, competitive wages or not? That's another thing. It would be nice if, as council, we could just say, we want more officers, we're gonna pay them more, and we're just gonna keep increasing that number until they're filled. But guess what? We can't even do that. We can't even control that because it requires some backdoor collective bargaining agreements, which just means it's between a city representative and a, um, union representative, and they figure out what it is, and then we talk about it in closed session and say yes or no, and it's always yes, and that's it. So we can't even change that. It would be nice if we could. It would be nice first if our charter was the supreme thing and not the collective bargain agreements as the supreme thing, because they conflict and, and our charter loses. I found that out a couple of times when I tried to create or move a position that can't be created or moved because of the collective bargain agreement. So between our HR department being able to hire faster or us being able to pay better, that would be the solution to getting more people there. But I'll support this, um, this resolution, especially because it says that the city must adopt a sustainable strategy to restore and maintain safe status. We know what that strategy is. It's been discussed. And as far as the next one, I, I don't want to support it that says we must add no fewer than six full-time positions. Does that mean fill the six time positions that's already there or increase the six time positions to add on to the vacancies? It's unclear, but it's a resolution, it's not binding, and it's calling for a strategy, so I can support that. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion on this issue? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Okay, we are to item 18, the council rules, and I apologize, the agenda, um, has the wrong snippet, um, afterwards. Um, actually, uh, it, it has not been moved and per council rule 41, the motion can be made tonight but cannot be voted on at this meeting, so, um, just to clarify that.
All right, councilmember Brown.
Thank you, and thank you, Clerks. Well, um, yes, uh, council rules amend, uh, Rule 48 Electronic Participation in Public Comment at Meetings of Council and Committee, um, from, uh, signing up four hours prior to 30 minutes. Check with, um, city staff, and 30 minutes was adequate enough time. And as the clerk indicated, we cannot vote on this until the next council meeting, May 12. And I move the resolution.
Okay.
All right, uh, with that, we are to ordinances for passage. We have item 19, an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to repeal and replace the existing zoning ordinance and mapping, Part 12, Title VI of the Lansing Codified Ordinances in its entirety except for Chapter 1300 Marijuana Operations with a Form-Based Code and Zoning Map as read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Garza.
All right, thank you, council president. So this evening, we are considering the Second Amendment of Part 12, Title VI of the Lansing Codified Ordinances, which fully repeals and replaces the existing Form-Based Zoning Code and associated map, excluding Chapter 1300 on the marijuana operations. This update aligns the zoning code with a designed Lansing comprehensive plan and ensures consistency with the state enabling, enabling legislation. It clarifies definitions, updates zoning district classifications, and refines regulatory language to promote predictable, compatible land use patterns that support neighborhood character, urban design, and economic development goals. With that, I would move the ordinance.
Okay, we have proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this issue? Clerk Swope, could you do the roll call?
Certainly. Councilmember Pelley Vanaglu.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Okay, next we have item 20, an ordinance of the City of Lansing, Michigan to amend the Lansing Codified Ordinances by amending Part 12, Title VI, Chapter 1250 to add 1250.04.08, allowing for accessory dwelling units on parcels in certain zoning districts with a principal use of single-family dwelling. Is read a second time by its title. The ordinance was reported from the Committee on Development and Planning and is on the order of immediate passage.
Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, and I won't belabor this one as, as well, but there are some key highlights I'd like to include, one being a detached ADU per lot is permitted located in the rear yard or within existing accessory structure, example garage or carriage house. Size limitations, uh, minimum of 400 square feet, maximum up to 1,000 square feet, not to exceed the ground floor area of the main home. Height limits 15-foot max, one and a half stories or up to 20 feet if part of the two-story garage. Setback minimums of 10 feet from side rear property lines, ADUs are not allowed in the front yard. Minimum sized lot 7,500 square feet in R-1 and 6,000 square feet in all of the listed districts. Maximum coverage, rear yard 33 percent, total lot 65 percent. Occupancy requirement, either the ADU or the primary home must be owner occupied, rental must be registered and licensed. And with that, I would move the ordinance.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Seeing none, can we get a roll call vote?
Okay, on the ordinance, councilmembers Spatafor.
Yes.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Cost.
Yes.
Councilmember Pelley Vanaglu.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Okay, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Councilmember Garza.
Okay, I make a motion that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by you, Mr. President Cost.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Okay, from the city clerk, minutes of boards and commissions.
Please unfile.
From the mayor, uh, the collective bargaining agreement for Teamsters 214.
Committee of the whole, place unfile.
Uh, General Fund Stas report for fiscal year 24, 25, third quarter.
Committee of the whole.
And the vacancy report for the third quarter.
Committee of the whole.
Communications and petitions and affidavit of disclosure, Erin Bittendorf, uh, Economic Development, Economic Development and Planning Department.
Ethics board.
And a communication from Shirley Mitchner, objecting to the, uh, police investigation of the death of her son.
Place unfile.
We are to motion of excused absence.
Okay, councilmember Garza.
I make a motion to excuse Councilwoman Tamar Carter.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes unanimously.
Uh, remarks by councilmembers.
Any further remarks for this evening? No takers.
Uh, remarks by the mayor or executive assistant.
Mr. Lawrence.
Uh, just a quick bit of news, as I'm, uh, looking through my email here, uh, MDOT looks like they're ready to start construction on the boulevards on South MLK in July. So those are on their way.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. Um, and if you, I, I forgot to call out the deadline, so if you need another minute, um, go ahead and get with, uh, Magdalen in the back, um, and in the meantime, we're, we will go forward with the ones we have. Uh, Michael Morofsky, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Michael Morofsky, 1300 Woodbine Avenue, I'm a Colonial Village neighborhood resident. There was awful about that drag racing crash that cost the young man his life, but a few weeks before that, MLK was shut down for three hours in the southbound lanes with a motorcycle crash because of high speed. What we really need, those signs with, that shows your speed, those things, that's just a waste of money. We need to have some police officers out there slapping them with some tickets. You get hit in the wallet, you catch on real quick. It's an old-fashioned way, but that's what needs to be done. Right after that accident happened, I tried to call the mayor's office, I left a message, nobody got back with me. I was gonna tell him about this. I, I'm sure they know what goes on. I'm sure they know what goes on on MLK. I called the chief's office, left a message, nobody got back with me. Called the Uniform Patrol Division, nobody got back with me. Something needs to be done about that. But I guess you guys don't really have the power, it's the mayor's office, and he controls the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway followed by David Lee Lambert.
Okay, we all know what happened on MLK, and there has been just a tremendous outpouring of public angst over it, and a lot of people are very upset, a lot of people are very frustrated. And what I continually hear from them in person and on Facebook is that it all boils down to being a major part of quality-of-life issues that seem to have declined throughout the city over the years with no end in sight. And those include, we don't feel like we're getting a return on our investment for our tax dollars. We have, we're being pickpocketed. Eighty percent of the population is being sacrificed on the altar of the downtown in developers and funneling dollars to the developers for their private profit. We have shootings, we have shots fired, we have gun violence, including pistol whipping, we have panhandlers, we have fraudulent funeral fundraisers funneling into the traffic lanes trying to collect money from drivers as they don't speak English and can't tell you who the person is that died or what state or country they're from or where they died. We have the homeless, we have encampments, we have needles discarded all over the city. I picked up two needles in North Cemetery the other weekend when we were doing our grounds cleanup. The drag racers, the speeders, the reckless and uninsured and unlicensed and unregistered drivers, strong-armed robberies, car thefts, vandalism, trash dumping, walking into any building in the city and being surrounded by pot odors, you know, these are all things that are affecting your citizens. They're all things that are affecting your taxpayers. I have one friend on Facebook who says she does not even go, although she's a city resident, she won't go to the Capital Area District Library downtown or on South Cedar, she doesn't feel safe. She goes to Oakmoss when she needs to go to the library. So how do we reverse this? What do we do? We've talked about how do we control the speeders, we've talked about how do we get more police or firefighters. You've got to do something with a budget. You can't just keep rubber stamping the budget every year as it comes out of the mayor's office. I have not gone through the whole thing yet. I've gone through six of the 12 pages of the line item budget, and just in four categories alone, utilities, insurance and bonds, parking, and IT, just in those four categories, in six or half, well, an eighth of the budget, there was an increase of $1.5 million. Who is looking at those things? Who's determining if those things are necessary or not? Who's going into the more detailed records of the city? When we have the opportunity to cut funds and eliminate unnecessary things, we should do it. We should be actively, seriously looking at reserve police officers, immediate impact, at medical taxis, immediate impact.
Thank you. Next, we have David Lee Lambert followed by Nick Zandi.
About eight years ago, this council, not all of you were here then, made Lansing a welcoming city by a resolution for, and I think an ordinance, for about a week, and then chickened out and left it to the mayor to set policy and do what was right, but didn't actually put your names behind it. And a lot has happened in those eight years. I know there were strong opinions about it then, but I think with the current climate, not the weather, but the, with what some people in control in the federal government are trying to do right now, it's important that you really make Lansing protect the rights of its residents, no matter what their status or what their background. And this isn't just people who might be called illegal immigrants. This is due process to protect citizens who maybe are a different race or raised in an immigrant community, to protect students, to protect everyone who want to express opinions one way or another on politics, to protect people here on work visas, people here on student visas, and to protect, and just to protect the rights of everyone. I didn't come here tonight with a draft, I mean, you could start with what you had last time, or you could look at what another city or county has done, or think up something new, but I think that would be an excellent thing for you to do as a council. Makes Lansing a welcoming city again.
Thank you. Next, we have Nicholas Zandi followed by Michael Mercer.
So you've heard people say their piece on the accident on MLK. I've certainly said my piece during the legislative section. I've said what I've said. I think that, yes, this is a worthwhile piece of legislation and consideration so that by allowing red light cameras and speed cameras for traffic enforcement purposes, but it should go further in that we should have boulevards as well as traffic circles so we can slow down traffic and so that pedestrians can feel much safer going across the street. Having said that, I'm also here to talk about the lack of a community center in the Second Ward. The closest thing the Second Ward has to community center is Fenner Nature Center, which, it's mostly just its own thing, like a nature center where people learn about nature, and the only thing that's sort of a community center is the enclosed pavilion. And I don't think that really should count as a community center. But I was thinking maybe the Second Ward should get an actual community center, like somewhere maybe in the old Everett neighborhood, since that's where most of the Second Ward generally lives, from what I remember. Maybe the old Career Quest Building could be useful, could be of use for a community center, as I've suggested. There had been talk of the old Sam's Club, which, that's a little too close to the highway, so I don't know if that's the best place for it. Plus, it's nowhere near close to the center of the population for the Second Ward. So I think within the old Everett neighborhood, we should consider a community center, maybe, again, the old Career Quest Building. My only problem with it is that it doesn't have a gym, so I don't know if that, so that it could be perfectly of use, but it could also be of use for the technology department or whatever it's called, so that they could move their operations down there because it has an entire commuter lab, which should be perfect for a department like that. And plus, it has plenty of classrooms, so it could be really great to use at least one of them or multiple of them for commuting rooms as well as department meeting rooms. That would be a really great place for it, and I think you should consider looking at pre-existing vacant buildings and lots for a possible community center within the Second Ward.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Mercer.
I found out today when I went on the west side of town to Francis Park, that there, I spoke to somebody who works for Park and Rec. He tells me there's only eight employees who work full-time for the Parks and Recreation, and that's it. And all the rest of those that need to be done, such as all the lawn mowing and everything, is done by the contract, you know, the city has with other companies come out and do all this. Here, work for the Lansing Parks, 101, what, 11 parks, only eight people. Four people work during the regular business hours, and the other four work during weekends. And I remember back during the days when, not you, sure, but the one before you, I don't want to say his name, didn't like him either. Anyhow, he laid off 52 Parks and Recreation people. I'd like to know why and how the city can't, you know, call more people to come and work for the, see the Lansing doing the parks, working for the Parks and Rec. And then, not only that, talking about all this drag racing going on on the south side of town here on MLK, last year, or not last year, earlier this year, I saw some people over that unemployment office down there on Jolly and Dunko in that parking lot, there was a number of people standing behind that little shopping center where the subway is, watching this stupid one doing donuts in the parking lot there. And I called the Lansing police as I'm at the light waiting for it to turn green, and I end up noticing it and telling them about it. They never did show up until it was too late when that person took off and he was long gone. And then, not too long ago, coming home from Meridian Township, taking Jolly down to Penn and turning, heading towards the south side, there at that Speedway in the corner of Miller and Penn, there was a stupid one that stepped on the gas, went right through that parking lot at the Speedway in front of the entrance. He could have run over and killed somebody as he's heading towards Miller Road. And then he turns, and then he heads south towards Aldi's, he turns left there, goes down one block, he turns left again, so you're right behind that La Fontaine dealership, and there's a spot after where they're doing all these donuts. And I called the police, I rolled the window down, I had them listen to all that speeding and burning rubber and everything, and they never did show up until it was too late because somebody must have heard me with the window down, calling the police. Some girl hollered, "The police are coming, the police are coming." They all jumped in their cars, they all took off, and by the time they got there, it was too late, except for one car who blew his engine. So that was it. You guys don't have the police out there? You need to hire more damn police, and you need to bring these people back from those who got, you know, let go years ago for the Parks and Recreation. You need more people. Because I did go to the Fenner Nature Center, you had a lot of people working.
Thank you. And that was our final speaker.
Okay, with no further business before this body, we are adjourned at 8:02.